Good afternoon, everyone. Large groups here today. We keep adding numbers of chairs every time we get together. This is awesome. I'd like to welcome everyone to Town Hall and also the people that are joining us on YouTube. And we'll not waste any time getting started today. Lori is first up to give us a welcome to all our new residents.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's always my honor to introduce all of the new residents at both Heritage Village as well as Moravian Hall Square. So we will start with Heritage Village. And if you can stand up and give a little applause and please wave. I first up have Tom. Tom and Candy Potter. They moved into their home at 365 all the way in the back. They moved into their home at 365 Freedom Circle on June 2nd, and they moved here from the Eastern area. Sharon Payson, is she here?
Sharon.
Sharon, there she is, okay. Sharon moved to her home at 363 Freedom Circle on June 4th, and she moved from Steven City, Virginia. This person is not here. Barbara Winkle has also moved into 367 Freedom Circle on June 17th. She moved here from Frenchtown, New Jersey. She was unable to join us today, but please make sure you welcome Barbara. And from Moravian Hall Square, we have Clara Masasa. She moved into her home apartment 224 on June 30th, and she moved here from Randolph, New Jersey. Clara could join us today. She's actually on vacation visiting family in New Guinea. So, let me ask her about her trip. And then Barbara Kepel. Barbara, is Barbara here? Barbara Kepel moved into her home apartment 355 on July 23rd. She moved here, as you know how I like to say, "all the way from where?"
Nazareth.
John and Brandon Shields, I know they are here. They're in the back. They moved into their home apartment 419 on July 24th. They moved here from the Eastern area. And Susan McInerney, I did not see Susan, but I was hoping she was not right here. Oh, there she is! Susan McInerney, she moved into her home apartment 104 on July 30th, and she moved from the Bethlehem area. So I hope you'll take an opportunity to welcome these folks, welcome them to our family and get to know them. So, thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple announcements that I wanted to make from the wellness office. First of all, last Town Hall I do a briefing on all the different committees that we have available. So I thought it would be beneficial to make a quick reference guide. I have some handouts here that you can pick up on the way out. It's just a list of the different committees and who the chairperson is or who you would need to contact if you wanted more information. There's more details on all of those committees on the app. And if anybody over here at Moravian Hall Square would like to have a hard copy, I'll put a couple at Amberine's desk. We'll print them off as they're needed because there are quite a few pages and I didn't want to waste paper. That information is also in the resident service guide that gives you a more detailed summary of what different groups do. So take a look at that and see if there's anything you want to get involved in. The second thing is, believe it or not, we're already looking to our vaccination clinics for the fall. I can't believe it already. So we have scheduled a flu vaccination clinic in September. On the 23rd, it's a Tuesday, we're going to set it up the way we do here in Court Hall every year. We're working again with Phoebe Pharmacy. We have it down to a nice smooth process. You'll be hearing more detail about filling out consents. Joan will be sending out some information. We will email Heritage Village. The consent forms will have paper copies in the Cooper Center and in the wellness office. And everybody here at Moravian Hall Square will be getting a copy of each consent in your mailbox. The second vaccination clinic will be for the COVID vaccination, and that will be held on Tuesday, October 7th. Joan will hand out both consents at the same time because if you're going to have to fill out your information for your insurance on the consent, you may as well get them both done at the same time. They did, we did verify with Phoebe that they want that information to be completed on the consent, even if you have received vaccinations with them in the past because there are sometimes changes to insurance. So just to be sure, if you need any help with that, let us know, but just to be sure, make sure you fill out the forms completely. The other point that I wanted to make this year, and this is different from other years. If you miss the day that we do the clinic, you would need to get your vaccinations elsewhere in the community. We can no longer keep extra shots back at the office and that you could come in another time to get them. And it has to do with charging insurance and who exactly is administering it. They want one of the pharmacists to be administering it in order for it to be paid for by Medicare. So if you can't make the clinic with us, you could go to any one of the local pharmacies, wagons, and get your vaccinations. If you have any questions as to whether you should be getting the flu shot, which I think is always a resounding yes unless you've got issues that your doctor might say that it's not the best idea. If you're not sure about COVID, I would have those conversations ahead of time with your primary care doctor. Place the call to them and see if it's recommended for you. I believe that's it on... Oh, I just wanted to let you know that we're going to extend it this year. There's only going to be one person administering. So we're going to time it so that he has to end up being here from 8:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. I think he said he can do seven every 15 minutes. So we try to keep the flow going and have registration out in the hallway the way we do other years, and it's usually a smooth operation. We've done it so many times, we've gotten pretty good at it. And that's it for updates from the wellness office. Next up on our agenda are some updates from Suzie Habibianco.
Testing. Testing?
Yes.
Good. Okay, how is everyone?
Good.
Good. Glad to see you and happy that you're here. I think we have a record attendance. Is that right? Okay, so my job is to give you an operations update, and I have a lot of information to share. So I'm going to go a little quickly because Michelle is a taskmaster and will only let me have so many minutes. So I'm going to start with my PowerPoint. And where is the... Okay, so first of all, I really divided the update into three sections. The first to give you, you know, the financial and the census information that we like to share with you in our spirit of being transparent with everyone. And then secondly, to let you know about where we are with our goals and strategic plans. And in fact, this was one of the questions that we got submitted. So I think the persons who submitted questions about the strategic plans and the direction of our organization, I hope that they will be answered in this section of the update. And then I just want to refresh your memory about some upcoming events, three specifically that are coming up in the fall this year. So, as you know, I say this every time I get together with a group of residents, that census is the driver of our financials. So census means occupancy. Where are we with occupancy in every style of living? So in residential living, and this is as of yesterday, August 13th, we're at 88%. We're at 95% of personal care, which is a real coup given the situation with the Bethany House renovations. We've been lagging behind, which we planned for in our budget with personal care census because of taking accommodations offline. But as of actually two weeks ago, we were able to get right back to the census where it needed to be in Bethany, which overall in personal care includes Bethany House, Morning Star Hall, and Galilee House, which is our memory support care. And then nursing care has been fluctuating also because, as you know, during the original part of the renovations and up until about three weeks ago, nursing care was impacted by the renovations in Bethany House. So we've been vacillating between 53, 55, 54, 58, and we're at actually right now 57 out of 59 accommodations. So that brings us to 97%. So we have strong census, and I do want you to know that the national trends are favoring life plan communities and the security associated with them. It's becoming the preferred style of living for retirees that can afford it. And the outlook, the prospectus, is very positive based on census trends. At Heritage Village, you know we have six phases. Three of them are at 100% occupancy. Phase one has one cottage that is not yet occupied. And phase six is real, I'm sorry, phase five has one cottage that we're still using as our model cottage. We just had an event there last Friday evening before the concert on Unity Green. And basically, that will be occupied in March of 2026. And phase six is fully sold. We're in the process of completing the cottage construction. We're going to move into the construction associated with the Village Green in phase six, and that should be complete by the spring of 2026. But the cottages will be occupied before the end of this year, the latest move-ins occurring in December. As all of that connects to our financials, the great news for all of us is that we are running better than budget. And while we've had some decline in the census or vacillating in the census numbers, not only because of Bethany House and the impact on the nursing home, but also in residential living where we've, you know, we have sales out and through the end of this year. But move-ins are really what drive the census. And some of those move-ins are not occurring until this month, next month, in the fall of this year. So our census, we have the, we actually have the capability this year of producing the best ever census for residential living at Moravian Hall Square based on the acceleration of sales that we're seeing, which is really great news. But what has really helped us is really the department leaders at this organization. Every day, they are looking at census, the revenue projections. I hope they're looking at it now. Looking at census, we all are. We're looking at the revenue. We're looking at shortfalls, and we're making adjustments to our expenses in our departments. And so largely because of a couple factors here, we're actually performing about $500,000 better than we actually budgeted, which is an increase over the great year that we had last year. So we stand to have a very good year if we keep everything on track. If census gets caught up in all styles of living and we maintain our expenses, you know, we should have a really, really great year. The drivers of that right now, of course, are the reduction in contract agency. And you've heard me talk over and over about how much we really don't want to have contract agency here, not because of the people who do the work, but because of the lack of their connection to the residents that we serve. So that cost, you know, which was a couple years ago and coming out of COVID, over a million dollars a year for contract agency workers. And we've been working really hard to bring that down and have been quite successful at doing that. Now that stems from the fact that we are having a better plan and process and innovation in our recruitment and retention strategies for healthcare workers, which I will talk about in a minute. So this is a very good financial position right now that we're in. The next part of the update is really to deep dive into the five marathon goals that were established by the Unitas Board. And I think you'll remember that in the Heritage, the spring edition of the Heritage publication, there's a two-page article about the marathon goals. And each of these is detailed on pages 12 and 13 of that spring publication. So if you have it and want to refresh your memory, you certainly can look at it. But I want you to know that I'm always available for you to stop by and ask questions if you have any concerns about the strategic initiatives or where we are with things. So I'm going to go through at a high level just to let you know what's been happening since these were approved by the Unitas Board of Directors in January 2025. The first of which is the staffing crisis. And it would be important for you to know, those of you who were in business, you know, in your careers, have you ever seen turnover rates among employees at the 40% level? I mean, I know when I came here, we really struggled with 17% and 20% turnover rates. And here we are in a, in a world where, you know, retaining employees is really a challenge, not only in our industry, but across all industries. So our current turnover rate hovers around 40%. The crisis really exists in our industry, in healthcare, specifically in hospitals and long-term care. And the contributing factors for that are really three. The aging population as people, and I'll be going into the large volume numbers of people that are of retirement age and aging, you know, for decades, basically, really puts a lot of pressure on the healthcare system. Obviously, more people needing care requires more workers. We also have an aging workforce, which means many, even here at Morning Star Living, of our team members are approaching or are at retirement age, and so they're going to be retiring. And those workers that work in healthcare that are retiring are not being replaced by younger workers at the same pace. So that's what's really creating, you know, part of the crisis. And then burnout, as we have fewer healthcare workers doing a lot more work with the types of illnesses that people have. We're dealing now more with chronic illnesses than acute illnesses. Chronic being long-term, long-lasting illnesses that seniors have to deal with for, you know, maybe even a decade versus acute illnesses that can be treated with medication or maybe require two or three days of healing or rehabilitation. You know, this puts a lot more burden on fewer workers, creating a lot of burnout. And so we struggle here really with trying to do things every single month for our employee population to keep them motivated, to show them that they're valued and appreciated. And that is part of the culture that we have at Morning Star Living. Basically, what we've done so far year-to-date in about these eight months that we've been into the strategic plan is we launched back in 2024, late in the year, what we called a, you know, new CNA shift. We found that we were really struggling with agency, contract agency workers on weekends for, you know, literally the population of team members working in healthcare at that time. So we paid a premium to attract the CNAs because that's who we really rely on to provide the care. So I don't know if you remember, but I think I introduced this at a couple of the resident association and council meetings, that we started this new shift for weekend coverage, and the CNA is paid a premium rate of pay. And that has been extremely successful. In fact, every time we have one of those positions available, it gets filled very quickly. And we see very little turnover. I think we had one turnover CNA since we started that. And that was for moving out of the area. So basically, that has been successful. This year, we also added an overlapping shift addition to our healthcare work schedules. And what that does is it provides additional staff support, team members, for those high activity times of the day, like mealtime or when the shift changes from first shift to second shift. We bring in a reduced shift of maybe four hours of additional people to provide additional care and services. And that has been working well. And then third, we just launched our flexible scheduling module, which is associated with our HRIS, which is Human Resource Information System, platform that we use for payroll and scheduling, et cetera. And what this does, this module, gives every team member the ability to schedule themselves for the hours that they want to work. So that has been very positive. Our board was very keen about us really focusing on that in 2025. And these three things have truly made a difference. The second marathon goal pertains to scalable infrastructure. So what does that mean? That means building an infrastructure for the affiliate organizations under Unitas communities that can support growth through the years. And this year, in 2025, it was most important for us to really focus on IT, information technology services. You'll remember that when the affiliation was launched, we actually, you know, basically combined our human resources departments so that we have our chief human resource officer overseeing all of the human resource needs for both Morning Star Living and for Moravian Manor Communities. And we did the same with our business and finance office. So that really helped us create scalable infrastructure in those two areas. So this year, our focus is on all of the IT functions, centralizing and standardizing platforms, software, and hardware across the affiliates. And as of next week, we will be welcoming a consultant to our organization. Her name is Kim Spibel, and she's with Hartman Executive Advisors. This is an IT consulting firm that is, she's going to literally serve as our chief information technology officer to bring all of our IT platform systems, hardware, everything, under one, you know, consistent and standard approach. So we're really excited about having Kim on board, but it won't just be Kim. This is a huge organization that we will have access to all kinds of IT experts, and we're really looking forward to it. She will not be on site. I know she's making a site visit in August. But primarily, she'll be working with our IT senior director Monica and the senior director of IT at Moravian Manor Communities. So, and that will be really virtual or online. Then the third marathon goal is about mid-market business. And so the question is, you know, who is in the middle market? I know when we first published the Heritage, I did get a lot of questions about who is the mid-market? Are we going to be building for them across the street from Heritage Village or next to us at Moravian Hall Square? But to put it into context about who this middle market retiree is, it's important for you to know that since 2010, when the first baby boomer started going into retirement, and remember, the baby boomer generation is 1946 to 1964, people that were born during those years. So we've had an age wave. I know a lot of people call it the Silver Tsunami, but basically, it's the wave of retirees that are going through retirement all at the same time. And in 2010, what started, what pace we were at was 10,000 people turning 65 in our country every single day. As of this year in 2025, that has increased to 11,400 people turning 65 every single day for a total of about 4.1 million new retirees each year. So those numbers are really staggering. When you think about it, by 2030, if you did the math, we'd be looking at over 17 million Americans that are of retirement age. So when I was talking about the staffing crisis and the contributors and the fact that we have retirees, you know, that are leaving the healthcare industry and fewer people to replace them, that's where all of this comes together and merges. So by 2029, middle-income people that are age 75 and over are expected to represent 43% of the total population of people that age. So when you look at it, you know, you might have heard the term "the forgotten middle." What does that mean? That mid-market is really the 43%. You, and that's all of you in the room, represent a little less than 4% of the retirees that actually can live in a life plan community because of the upfront entrance fees that are required and the ongoing monthly fees. And of course, the 53%, I don't know if you can see that well, but 53%, those are the people that are not mid-market. They are not you, and they are people that will qualify for Medicaid. So you can see, there's this large group, 43%, almost 50% of retirees that can't or won't qualify for Medicaid, but they don't have the financial wherewithal that you do to move into a community like this. So it puts them in a dilemma. And when we talk demographically about who that middle market is, we're talking about people that have some income, okay, from social security and maybe pension. But literally, the median retirement savings are only about $202,000. So you know, based on that number and what you know about our community, there's no way they could afford to move into a life plan community like Moravian Hall Square or Heritage Village. So why do we want to serve the middle market? Well, first of all, we're a not-for-profit organization whose mission is to serve more and more people. And that was the compelling reason why we purchased Senior Solutions in 2012. We initially bought that organization, which was a profit organization, turned it into a not-for-profit with the idea that we wanted to serve people, not only our own residents, but people throughout the Lehigh Valley. And so likewise, we want to be able to serve the mid-market. By 2033, over 11 million people won't be able to pay for senior living or housing because they're going to fall in the middle. They won't qualify for Medicaid, and they don't have enough financial wherewithal to qualify for communities like ours. So the impact is really going to be on two things: healthcare and housing. So we want to take advantage of the opportunities, and what are they? When we went to the board in May of 2025, just a few months ago, we presented to the Unitas Board of Directors the status of where we were with things in our strategic initiatives, all five of these strategic marathon goals that I'm talking about. And we presented a number of different opportunities for mid-market entering the mid-market housing development for senior living. And basically, we get opportunities probably pretty much, I would say, every month. Somebody comes to us with an opportunity. The two that the board approved for us to work on and do some due diligence with are really one project that is located in Lancaster, not far from Moravian Manor Communities. And then the other is located in Allentown in Lehigh County, which of course is in our geographic market. Now what, again, I want you to know about these two opportunities is they are not communities that look like Moravian Hall Square or Heritage Village. We're talking about, you know, a multi-story, probably apartment building where it's a rental, basically. No entrance fee, no healthcare services. We might provide a care navigator or care coordinator to help get the people who live in our project to the resources they need. But we certainly couldn't afford to pay for healthcare services or promise them a continuum of care at the market rent of what they're willing and capable of paying. So the fourth marathon goal has to do with harmonizing residential living and healthcare. And I would say that this is where a large part of my time has been consumed lately, looking at a number of different things with Matt Matechek, who, we have this task force for all of these marathon goals that we're working on. And this is probably one of the most exciting things that I, that I've worked on really this year. The goals here are to increase private nursing accommodations. We don't really want to... We don't really want to have people living in semi-private accommodations in nursing care. It just doesn't feel like who we want to be. So what we have to do is figure out the winning formula or the combination of how we stabilize our nursing care revenue while replacing it with other revenues. So we want to eliminate the reliance on short-term rehab admissions because, remember, those are non-residents that are coming in to keep our accommodations filled. Okay, so that's part of the goal of going to private because the fewer rooms that we have that are private, we won't be able to take as many short-term rehab residents. And that's favorable to us because basically, we never get the opportunity to really develop relationships with the residents that come in for short-term rehab only. They're coming in, and they just want the rehab, and they want to get out of here. And there's a lot of work that goes on with admitting people into short-term rehab and then providing the social services that we're obligated to provide for them and the 24/7 care and the discharge planning. So you have somebody coming in for a very reduced period of time, but we're spending a ton of resources in terms of people time and services. And then we want to plan for the increase in memory care needs. I think we're all probably passionate about Alzheimer's disease and dementia care because there's no cure for it. And while many of us work on, with other organizations throughout the Lehigh Valley that work with finding a cure or providing resources or making dementia-friendly, you know, communities and businesses throughout the Lehigh Valley, the fact of the matter is, there is not yet a cure. And what we see and what every other community like ours that provides a continuum of care is seeing is the demand that is being placed on dementia care, memory support care. So all of these things contribute to this one marathon goal about harmonizing residential living and healthcare because basically, there's a need for memory care. We want to reduce the number of nursing home accommodations that are semi-private, where we have two people in one accommodation. And then, of course, we want to eliminate our reliance on short-term rehab residents or patients that are coming and going. So this is really a picture that has a lot of different moving pieces. And that's what we're in the process of figuring out right now. So Matt has been instrumental in helping us with an architectural firm that has been looking at a number of different layouts for Galilee House, a way to expand Galilee House accommodations there, a way to look at one of the areas in our other personal care accommodations that basically could be used for personal care or memory support care. And we are just, we just got the plans, I think, two weeks ago. We're going through those right now. This morning, we had a meeting, Matt and I, with a consulting firm called RKL, who's doing a feasibility assessment and study about the cost and expenses with all of the plans that we shared with her and that firm, basically saying, okay, if we do this to Galilee House, what are the staffing and care implications? If we do this to Morning Star Hall, how much staff are we going to need that we're not staffing for now? Because all of that goes into the making of the picture of basically reducing our nursing home beds to all private accommodations. And to that end, of course, it also includes the increase in residential living. So you'll remember, probably over a year ago, we talked about in a program, I think we called "No Room at the End," where we were talking about, what is the real number of residential living accommodations would we need if we only wanted to serve our own residents? And I think I explained to you in that program about how, over the years, we drastically increased the amount of healthcare accommodations we built on this campus. Thus, we don't have enough residents to keep those accommodations filled. So I think, you know, through that whole exercise, you know, I worked with David, who's a financial guru, on the calculation of what it would cost if we left those nursing beds empty and didn't take short-term rehabs. And I believe it was $8 million a year we would lose by leaving those accommodations open. And then how many accommodations residences, not residents, do we need that are independent residential living homes that would keep all of our existing accommodations filled in healthcare? And that number was over 500. We are not near that. We're hundreds away from that, even with the number of residents that's going to max out Heritage Village on the south side of Bial Avenue and also with the residential living accommodations in this community. So that is why we got very interested in looking at some properties where we could start to expand at Heritage Village. And this is that property that I shared with residents, I believe I've shared with on both campuses, about the fact that we have put under agreement a six-acre property that is in Bushkill Township across the street from Phase One at Heritage Village Now. And basically, again, wherever we can acquire properties to expand our existing life-plan communities, we do that. I think you probably know we acquire properties on Green Street regularly here because Green Street backs up to this campus. So we have a number of homes that we own there that, right now, we're running out. But this is basically a six-acre property. It's in Bushkill Township. There is a lot of work that we have to do relative to this project. Basically, because in Bushkill Township, you are only allowed to have one dwelling per one acre. So obviously, we don't want to take the six-acre property and put one cottage on one acre because we want it to look and feel like the cottage communities that we built in the phases at Heritage Village across the street. So this is what we've taken, very informally, to some of the officials at the, in Bushkill Township, which shows what we call a call-to-sac development. We're by, we would build, we're proposing, five cottages on this six-acre parcel and dedicate this remaining, it's over three and a half acres, to be preserved for walking trails or woodlands or whatever. And basically, we've gotten very favorable feedback. But again, we have to create a win-win situation where we're able to achieve what we want to, but we do things that are pleasing and pleasant for the township of Bushkill. Then, the last of the marathon goals was really about branding. And, you know, from being in sales and marketing here for many, many years, it's always been exciting. Anytime we get the opportunity to brand, rebrand, build a new website, we're in the midst of it right now, redoing our existing website. But basically, we wanted to build a brand for Unitas Communities. We created a website, okay, which is at unitascommunities.org. We developed a brochure. And we also created some taglines to tie both of the affiliate organizations, Moravian Manor Communities and Morning Star Living, to Unitas. So if you go on our website right now, you will see that a Unitas Communities affiliate is on every page of our website underneath the Morning Star Living name. And likewise, we wanted to tie Unitas to each of our respective life-plan communities. And so we created a tagline called "Better Together." And we are submitting proposals right now to be able to present on affiliation and the process that we went through and the journey that we're on and how we got to where we are today at the Leading Age National Conference next year in Philadelphia and also the one that is going to be taking place in June in Hershey, Pennsylvania. So my last part, sorry, Michelle, she's like tapping her watch like David Portle does. But just three things to make sure you have on your calendar. The first is, we have the Walk to End Alzheimer's. And that is going to take place at Steel Stacks in South Side Bethlehem on Saturday, September 20. And that will be cheer-led by our Activities Department and Healthcare. So you'll be getting more information about that. The next is our, basically, our Oktoberfest, which will be taking place on Monday, October 13, in the Pleasure Garden. And I just love this picture of the residents here. And you know who you are. And then, last but not least, a very, very important event to this organization. Every year, it's our largest fundraiser, is our Harvest of Friends event. This is the event that is earmarked to provide for benevolent, charitable care for residents who outlive their ability to pay for care and services here. So I would really encourage and ask that you think about attending and being a part of this wonderful event. This year, Molly has orchestrated the founder and president of the Dementia Society of America to be our sponsored speaker, and his name is Kevin Janison. So thank you very much for your time. Happy to provide this update. And again, please feel free to stop by if you have any questions or would like any additional information.
Okay, next up, we have Jennifer George joining us today from Meals on Wheels of Lehigh Valley. She's the Special Projects Coordinator. If you'd all like to give her a nice welcome, I'll turn it over to her.
Good afternoon. It's so nice to be with you today. I'm sorry that Monica couldn't be here. She said, "Don't worry, Jen, there's probably only going to be about 12 people." She kind of threw me into this. I've been with Meals on Wheels for about a year now, and I absolutely love it. I love what I do every day. Is everyone here familiar with Meals on Wheels and what we do?
Yes.
Okay, so... I'll do the best that I can with this, so please bear with me. Okay, so our vision is immigrate to Lehigh Valley. We hope that all seniors and adults with disabilities live nurtured lives with independence and dignity. So what is different? Because there are a lot of other services out there. But Meals on Wheels has been doing what we do here for over 53 years. We have experience in the Lehigh Valley. We have many partnerships with St. Luke's, Lehigh Valley Health Network, corporations like PPNL. We just held an event yesterday where we packed emergency food boxes with Amazon workers who came and volunteered for the day. So we have a lot of partners. We do provide meals, and they are customizable. So if you don't like broccoli, you don't have to get broccoli. They are medically tailored. So we have, you know, a renal diet. We have pureed and soft foods available for our clients. And we also use a lot of local farmers, like Hunsicker Farms and Shoals. Have anybody been to Shoals Orchard? I love their apple cider. So we try to partner with local farms to provide the freshest possible produce we can. And we try to do whole foods. We try to keep the, you know, the processing out of it and make homemade meals every day in our kitchen. Not every Meals on Wheels has a kitchen, by the way. We are nationwide, but we're lucky enough to have our own kitchen. Our volunteers come, and we could not do what we do without our volunteers. And why is that so important? As many of you know, it can be very isolating to not have family or friends check in on you. So our volunteers play such a crucial role in checking on our clients, our seniors, and we make sure that they're okay every day. And a lot of our volunteers will only do a specific route because they do develop a personal relationship, and that is so important. So who are our clients? Our clients range in age from 21 to 105. 55% live alone. 43% live with one other person. 47% are low-income, below 133% of the guidelines. 62% are tenants. All are homebound. And one misconception about Meals on Wheels is that it's just for seniors. But we actually have so many clients that I have come to know, and before I started with Meals on Wheels, I did not know. But we have many individuals who need our services due to a medical condition. They're legally blind. We have so many individuals that we serve. Most have chronic, multiple chronic diseases that impact their diet choices. So our daily meal deliveries, we serve over 373,175 meals to over 2,000 clients. We have multiple case managers in Lehigh and Northampton Counties that go out to take an assessment. With the case manager, they really get to know the client. Meal cost is determined using a sliding scale fee. So not every, you know, some meals are covered by the county and subsidized, others through a sliding scale. Clients can choose one or two daily meals. We also serve weekend meals. And food preferences are recorded so that we can customize their meals. Okay, now we come to the fun stuff because this is what I do. This is some things that you might not know that we do. So many individuals, because they are homebound, cannot go out grocery shopping. So we provide a giant direct account for them. And then we organize volunteers to pick up their orders. And many of these seniors don't have internet or they might not be able to use technology. That's me. But I have figured it out. We also have the Anne Meals Program, which is wonderful. We have that through corporate sponsorship. We have a $50,000 grant that we luckily have every year. So what we're doing there, you can see Suzie. She's one of my regular volunteers. And they come and they pack the pet food. We order with Chewy, and then we get cat food, cat litter, and dog food. So once a month, we make those deliveries to our seniors with their meals. So that way, it's helping people financially that maybe the only thing that they have is their dog or their cat, and that is so precious. So this enables them to subsidize so they can afford to keep their pets. In the lower picture, you'll see Melissa there with a volunteer. And what we do with these, our senior food boxes, we partner with Second Harvest. And we provide a 32-pound shelf-stable box that goes out once a month to our seniors. So again, this is just supplementing the meal that they get. I am also a chef, so this is a fun part for me because a lot of what we do is give the client a meal. But what's fun about the box is you're actually getting something that you can make a meal. There's a recipe in the box, and it comes with everything that you need to put together a meal. I love to be in the kitchen, and I think it's really great for people to stay active and be creative and make a fun meal for themselves. We also have chef packs for those that don't like to cook. And what those are, it's a frozen pre-made meal. We have a menu. And then the client can just call in and order that, and we deliver it to them. In the winter, we do really delicious soups as well. Last year, when I started with Meals on Wheels, I was thrown into this project. It's a smoke detector project. We have a retired fire chief, and he and his lovely wife go out. And actually, for the clients that do own their own homes, a lot of them are not able to do all the maintenance. But we know it's so important to have smoke detectors. So he goes and he schedules a time with them and will actually go to each smoke detector, change the batteries, make sure that they're in working order, and if needed, replace the batteries. And that is all funded by us. There is no charge to our clients for that service. Okay. Our volunteers. The total number of volunteers we have is 900. The total of miles driven, 353,947 miles, which is incredible. Total number- Total number of hours donated, almost 70,000 hours. So how do we have our funding? The cost to produce one meal is $11.70. The average client is subsidized at $6 per meal. And how do we raise our funds? Individual donations, grants, county contracts, fundraising events. In fact, we're doing a bingo fundraising event for the first time this Friday. It should be a lot of fun. Sponsorships and corporate partnerships. Oh, by the way, I wanted to just mention, I saw your Alzheimer's up there. We are doing that, so I hope to see you all there. We signed up, a bunch of us, to do it with Meals on Wheels. So you'll see us with our t-shirts there. I hope you can come. Okay, our meals. Our meals are, we do provide a hot meal, which again, differentiates us from a lot of other services out there. There's frozen meals out there. But we actually are handing our clients a hot meal that they can eat right away. We also have cold bags. Some of our clients just want a sandwich with some sides, so we offer that. We have a combo, you can get both. And then to get clients through Saturday and Sunday, we give them frozen meals they can eat over the weekend. And then I did talk about our chef packs. So where are we here for pickup locations? So if you volunteer with Meals on Wheels, has anyone volunteered with Meals on Wheels before? Well, thank you very much. So we have, here are our sites that we currently have. Not on the list. We just added a brand-new Ameis site, and we actually have some clients in Carvin County. We're typically Northampton and Lehigh County, but now we actually did expand a little bit into Carvin County. And so, everyone's looking forward to happy hour. So I'm going to wrap it up, and I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to be here. Thank you all so much for your attention. And if anyone would like any more information on the table, I'm going to leave some brochures. If you would like to volunteer, please do reach out to us. We always need volunteers. There's a variety of different projects and ways that you can help because, as you see, it's not just meals. We pack welcome bags for clients with toiletries. We do the pet food program. We do the grocery shopping. So you can deliver meals, that's great. But if you want to help in another way, please just reach out. And then there is our information. I'll leave some more. If you'd like to make a donation, you can certainly just go to our website. So thank you all very much for your time.
So we're now to the math.
Good afternoon. So we are now on the Bethany House Project update, and we are at the end stretch of this project. I know a lot of us are excited. We have approximately two more weeks of this project than we should be completed. We started back in September of 2024. So can you believe it? It's almost a year has flown by. So as of this past week, we have completed these last four rooms here, and we relocated residents back. This week, they are currently working in this core area where we have a room that's 2016. And 20, or sorry, yeah, 2016 and 2033. Whoops. What happened? There we go. So we're in these two rooms last that are the last two combinations that have to have improvements made. They're also doing work in the spa area, which is where we have a tub that residents use on a weekly basis. And then they're also working in the nurse's office here. So right now, they're doing cabinet work, countertop lighting. Yesterday and the day before were a big challenge. We ended up replacing the carpet that's in this Hampton hallway. So it took a day for them to rip out the old carpet. They had to make improvements and on the flooring that was there, scrape up the old glues and level everything out. And then they laid the carpet yesterday. So with the residents' support, we had to have residents relocated from 8:00 AM until approximately 3:00 PM both days. So we found different things for them to do. It was, I'm sure they were exhausted after it. A lot of them were looking forward to go back to their rooms. But our goal coming up this week, which will start Monday, is they're going to start doing ceiling work and tearing up flooring and painting the last stretch, which is another challenging area, which is right outside the Bethany House dining room, which is the Lafayette dining room. So that's the only access point to get people in for meals. So we're going to have to think about how we're going to get these people in and out. But that's not going to occur until the week of August 25th. So as I said, August, 8/14 renovations will begin on these rooms. They started a little bit earlier. They removed the carpet, and we're painting the corridor now, and they should finish it by August 22nd. And then the Lafayette dining room, they start August 14th. Ceiling work, including they're replacing all of the duct work that's there as well and replacing it with brand-new. They're going to be, they already ripped out all the wall cover, so they're going to be painting. And then the flooring is going to be the most difficult part of this stretch, but we're confident we will get through it. And then on August 28th, the two companies that we are dealing with, RLPS and Snyder Hoffman, they're both engineered, one's an engineering company and the other one is the architect. They come in and they do their final punch list of the project. So they're going to come and make sure that everything that we have ordered is up to satisfactory before we continue to pay the final bill. I don't know how many people are familiar with the Bethany Reading Room as well. That's outside of the area of Hampton. We have a small reading room. There's a laundry room there for residents. We're also redoing those areas as well. And that will be taking place starting next week as well. So we will be finished by September 1st, which is Labor Day. The last piece of the whole thing would be is doing furniture, arrangement, artwork, and accessories. So we have had furnishings purchased. We used RLPS to help us assist with that. But we're also using another woman that we've dealt with, her name is Caitlin, that helped do the design work for the Oxford Cottage model. So we're actually looking, as we have sold that cottage, to use some of those pieces in that cottage and repurpose them in the Bethany House project and other places, and models as well as here. So we are excited that this will be completed and done. And now we can move on to the next project, which I'm sure will start right away. The only other comment I had was, Sue did a nice letter that she placed in the Hall Circular for the Weekly Wrap last week, pertaining to our new entry access system that we're going to be improving here for security. We currently have what they call as a door access program that you can use a fob or a name badge to get in in our program by the individual resident or employee. Right now, we have seven access points. There are four located in our residential living apartment, and then there's three over on this campus, on this side of the campus. Morning Star Hall in particular, and outside of Galley House where our staff entrances. We are looking to add four more additional access points, one of them being at the Greenhouse, the other one being two stair towers that we have located here. Stair tower four that leads out to the Baronee parking lot, where a lot of residents come in and out of. And then there's also one outside of the Pleasure Garden, stair tower three, where residents come in and out of. So we're trying to upgrade our system. The software that we have, the current system is 25 years old, and they don't support it anymore. So we decided at this point in time it's essential to upgrade the system. So we're looking possibly at the end of September, early October. We're still working through those guidelines, and we will provide more communications as we nail down the final part of that. But each resident that currently has a fob will get a new fob, and we will coordinate that. The good thing is, is the system that we have at the Cooper Center, the two access points there, you'll be able to use your fob here, as well as residents here will be able to use it over there. So it's the same system now. So that's one less thing we have to worry about. The other piece to this is, if you have a family member that has a fob, they will still have to, what we call is, register for a new fob. There will not be a fee. But if there is new people moving in and their family members are requesting a fob, we are requiring a $50 charge moving forward because the fob costs money, obviously. But then we also are upgrading our security system and having us do a security criminal background check on all individuals that have a fob. And you may not be aware, we do this on all residents that live here as well. So it's making sure that we are being compliant. Why would we have you do it but not your family or agency nurse or whoever has access to our building? So that's another good point that we're upgrading with our policy and procedure. My opinion, I think that's a few updates as well.
Thank you. No slides for me. So a couple of updates that I wanted to just bring forth to everyone of things that you'll be seeing on both campuses. First being on this campus, a couple of things that we've been waiting for to dovetail off of what Matt was talking about with the Bethany Project, is something that we do every year in certain areas, and that's seal coating the parking lot areas. So this year, we will be doing the main entrance and the area that goes down underneath the underpass of Bethany and into Morning Star, into that healthcare parking lot area, past the bays, down to Galley. We wanted to do that last year, but decided it didn't make any sense to do that with all the construction materials that was going to be out there. So this way, it'll get a nice, fresh, clean look, new lines, new tags for who's to park where, all those things. Same thing in the front entrance with the drop-off and where people shouldn't be parking and all those things. So that would be, once the project's completely finished and we get everything off the parking lot area. The other area that we're going to be focusing on this year with some parking lot, and it'll cause some communication that will get out to you when it happens. Two locations up here on the west entrance when you first come in off of North Street. That area has been consistently breaking apart, and we've been patching it ourselves for multiple years from winter, thaw, freeze, all those things. So there's a large portion that we're going to replace this year in that section. It won't be the whole thing, but it will cause some delays of having to reroute and move around and come in the main entrance. So there'll be a lot of timing that we have to kind of work on with the contractor who's doing that. And then there's another section over here by Baronee, in the Baronee parking lot, near the main entrance, where there is a rain basin that is in the middle of the road. Over the winter, same thing. We had thaw and freeze where the elevation and pitch and change was quite drastic. So we're going to redo some areas in there. So again, it'll be timing and communication that we send out to everybody when that happens because it does affect everyone on this campus and then anyone who's coming over from Heritage Village to stop in for programming, dining, anything of that nature. Along with that is those who come down and sit in the hallway for morning coffee, anybody who comes over and views or uses the interior courtyard. You've noticed that that pond feature that we have in there has not been operating properly since the winter. We have a leak on that middle pond that's in there, and maybe even on the upper one. So we're in the process of getting pricing and drawings done up to get a new renovated pond feature in there. So I just wanted to let you know that you'll start seeing some activity in there, hopefully in early fall because we'll be disrupting that area of the courtyard, and there'll be some workers coming in and out. So that'll be a nice thing to have back again next year. The fish are still living in there. They're swimming around. They're still down there. Not as clean as it once was, but they're making it dirty too. So they have a hard time. And then over at Heritage Village specifically, Sue had already mentioned Phase 6 and where we're at. You know, we're coming to the end of that project as well. So the rest of Phase 6 is supposed to be finished by the end of this year with everyone moving in. So we're really excited to see that because that means that all those construction materials and vehicles are off-site. And for those of you who have seen it since the very beginning of Phase 1, to those who are still living in it right now, I can guarantee you and myself aren't going to know what to do with ourselves next year until the next project starts, which I talked about as well. So, and that leads us into the basin cleanout. You know, everyone wants to kind of know about that basin cleanout. I don't have any rock hard dates because originally it was going to be the end of July, and now we're around the end of August. So that is coming up. So there will be action happening back there. And the basin that I'm referring to is behind Phase 3. They have to come in and mitigate everything that is in that basin right now that's been naturally growing up on its own. And they have to satisfy all of our permitting that was put in place prior to the project starting and pull that out, put new amended soil down because that is where all of our storm water is running off to from Phases 3, 4, 5, and 6 in that basin. So there'll be activity happening over there. The good thing is, they'll be coming in from the backside, so it shouldn't really disrupt much of what's happening on the internal roads other than maybe some construction trucks or things parked over by the garden in Phase 3 and Patriot. So a lot of things happening there. And the last piece of it is, along with what Sue had talked about of, you know, keeping things cohesive throughout the whole organization. You know, we have a vision of what this campus is always meant to look like in Heritage Village and keeping continuity with one another. And we do consistently make walkthroughs of the campus. We have different conversations with people along the way. We have different input that comes through. We send out communication from time to time on things that are happening or maybe some updates or changes that have to happen. But in some of our current walkthroughs that we did, there are things happening on the external grounds of the community, both here and at Heritage Village that are outside of the guidelines that we put in place. So for anyone living at Heritage Village that's here today, I do have a handout up here for you to also take. In that handout, it just has the email of communication that went out back this past June, referencing some of these things that weren't being followed and the guidelines that they are connected to. So feel free to take one. Know the other piece is that if someone, any, whether it be cottage apartment with an outside balcony or patio that has something outside of the scopes of what we put in our guidelines, there's going to be some communication sent out individually just asking to kind of, if it's something that's not being followed, to remove, update, make changes. So I just wanted to kind of bring that out to everyone's attention today so that it's something that if you were to get in the mail, that you're not caught off guard on it. And then the last piece that I will say, and then we'll wrap this up. In the Weekly Wrap, there has been communication[1743.88] In the weekly wrap, there has been communication on our honeycomb from the Heritage Village area. And I was asked to just bring it to the attention that open raffle is still happening up till next week, around Wednesday. So if you're interested in getting in the raffle to get honeycomb from the cut comb honey that we had produced by RVs, which is hugely beneficial to you, you can still get your name in that raffle. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, last sector before your happy hour. We're gonna go over some of the questions and give you some answers for things that were submitted ahead of time for our request. So question number one, the notification on the activity app of bus transport from HB to Port Tal on Tuesday evenings is gray. What could we have bold print on the signup message to tell what the event is? So I took, Danielle helped me to do this. This is exactly what you would see when you go in, and you can see every Tuesday, that's an automated announcement. Right there, if you can see that. The HB shuttle to MHS is there every Tuesday from 6:30 pickup to 7 o'clock. And in the description, it says it's for Tuesday evenings entertainment, and the next thing right underneath that box always is what that entertainment is. So it is really there, and it's easy to look at. If you're not sure, you can always check your calendar. That information would be on the dial. Question number two, almost all activity times are listed as one hour timeframe. Could this be adjusted to be more specific, so that we know basically what time we're getting back home? Most activities are one hour. There are times, such as today, that we go over our expected timeframe. It could be for questions and answers at an end of a presentation. It could be that people are hanging out after an activity to socialize and talk a little better, or they have questions for whoever's leaving the activity. So, you know, that's up to you. You're welcome to limit your time with us to an hour, or hang out if things do run later. That's really hard to know for sure. Question number three, thank you for the excellent entertainment on Tuesday nights. I think some of the entertainers feel awkward when they need to introduce themselves, should there be a person assigned to this. We wholeheartedly agree. I know occasionally residents are asked to do the introductions. Jim Wood and Mary Ann Presto-Leebo are always happy to do that. If there's not someone, our activities and community life leaders are going to make sure that that is assigned to someone. They should be introduced and welcomed to our community and not have to do that themselves. So thank you for that. Question number four, could us, okay, so there was several different questions on, all related to signups. So I've kind of paraphrased some of them and made it like one subject. So first, could signups open up later than 8:00 AM? We've tried to do it later in the morning, and we've got a lot of complaints, because people are up and about at that time, are already out for activities, exercise, appointments. So majority did want to keep it at 8:00, so that we'll remain the same. Number two, there was an issue with signups opening up earlier than 8:00 AM. We did a little bit of looking into that and found out that the program was defaulting back to midnight on several occasions. So Danielle was working with Dorine to try to figure out how to avoid that from happening. It was not something that was in our control, but we're working on that one. Please know that. Whoops, sorry. And some activities filled to max capacity fast, leaving some residents on a waitlist. We'll be done about this. Believe it or not, that's a good problem. We're pleased to see that the activities are so popular that they're getting filled up. We recognize that there are several reasons that could be happening. Sometimes the, it depends on the number of seats available for transportation, of course. That would be a consideration. Some events such as, we'll use Jim Thorpe as an example, there's a trolley up there, only so many people can go on the trolley, so they need to take that into consideration. Sometimes it's a number of tickets. And an example like the Iron Pigs, there is a suite that's available to us, and that's only so many people held in that suite. So know that we're working on it, and a couple examples of things that we know we can do to improve this is that, you know, Iron Pigs is so popular, we have had two runs this year, and still have people on a waitlist. So next year, we are going to try to get a third night, a third run for that suite. The second thing, something such as Jim Thorpe, we could split the group, so that if there's only so many people that can go on the trolley, we can have half the group go on the trolley, half the group go to lunch, and then maybe flip flop the work. You know, there's creative ways to get around these things. We want to accommodate as many people as we can on trips and activities, and please know that we are thinking of it and working on it. Ice cream, you scream, we all scream for ice cream. So lots of talk about ice cream. So, so one point that I do wanna make, and I think there was a misunderstanding I just wanted to clarify, there was an ice cream truck at Reagan Hall Square, and it was for staff appreciation. If residents approached the truck, they would not be turned away, they could pay for it on their own, just the way you would pay for an ice cream for the truck that comes around at Heritage Village on Monday nights. And I didn't want people to think that we were providing free treats down here and leaving anybody else out. That was specifically for staff appreciation, which Sue talked about, how we'd like to treat everybody once in a while so they keep coming back, right? Question number five is gonna be answered by Matt.
So, we understand that there are some issues with the bus and the air conditioning. We have two buses. We have a 2009 Chevy 32 passenger bus that was purchased back in 2009, and then we have a Ford Challenger bus, which is a 15 passenger bus that was purchased in 2019, and that also has wheelchair capability, and we purchased that specifically to help with our medical transport. So at the same time, this year, we had both buses had issues with air conditioning, either the front, the back. We've taken it to multiple places in the beginning of the season. They felt that they corrected these issues. They find something else wrong with it, a leak or an expansion valve. So what Mary and I have decided to do is, we took the first one, the 15 passenger bus to the company we purchased it from six years ago. It's called Aurora Bus, it's about an hour away. So they're looking at the bus, because what we just had done two weeks ago is replace an expansion valve that seemed to solve the problem, and then just goes in and out intermittently. We don't understand why. So the hard part about this is, the companies that actually put in the air conditioning system aren't Ford or Chevy, it's other companies. And guess what happened with those other companies? Out of business. So now you're trying to match parts with other companies that don't primarily know what our air conditioning system might be. So we've given them schematics and so forth to try to resolve the problem. So we're, we took the 2019 Challenger, the 15 passenger bus out there, so we're hoping to hear by Monday if there's anything that they can do, or what we can do to replace that or fix it, whatever we need to do. The 32 passenger, once that bus returns, because the plan is to take that one out, because that was having problems too with the coil, and we've had that and other things replaced on that recently, and it just seems that one portion works sporadically, and we can't understand why. So we've been taking it to Nazareth Ford, we decided to take it to a different company that Mary has dealt with, working for the school district. They take all their buses to a place called PVT in Wing Gap. They worked on it, they thought they solved it, but then when it leaves there, it works. When it gets back here, it doesn't. So I understand there are some frustrations with it, and we're trying to work through it. We'll probably fix it when it's cool. Believe you and me, this is not something that, we've been worrying and trying to fix this for months, and I know it's been upsetting some people, and we're trying to get it corrected as soon as possible. We are looking at another bus, and we're not looking at a 32 passenger bus, we're looking at another 14 or 15 passenger bus. So when they would take trips, you could take two smaller buses, and the reason we're looking at that is, the benefit of having two wheelchair capability is the one, and then the second is, you don't need a CDL driver. And that's another challenge, getting somebody to drive a bus. And it seems like a lot of these trips that we're going to now, recently, I've been going to Philadelphia and other places, that's not an easy ride, or somebody that wants to drive there, and I wouldn't want to drive that bus down there. But you're having difficulty getting people to do that as well. So we're looking at it from the long term, it might be more beneficial to go with the smaller bus that could be utilized in two facets, medical and personal. So I hope that answers the question. The other thing is, I don't know if she put it in, but this is the bus we're looking at right now, and it's, if you look at it, the cost is $127,000. It's not a cheap investment, but there are other things that we can do to upgrade the bus. One of them's a liquid spring suspension system, which would be another $14,000 approximately. But that'll help make it a smoother ride. So in the long term, wouldn't you want to spend that money so that you're investing? So we're looking here, that's the first estimate I got. I'm working with another company to provide you with a second estimate, so that we can compare it and see what is the best option for our organization. And I know Moravian Manor is also looking at a potential of getting another bus, so we're trying to go up two for one deal, but I mean, that hasn't happened.
And just a quick reminder, we've answered the questions that are meaningful to the community as a whole. Any questions that come in that are specific from Moravian Hall Square or specific for Heritage Village are answered in writing, and they're available up here on the desk for you to pick up. There was only one from Heritage Village, and just a couple from Moravian Hall Square. And just feel free to pick up some things on your way out. And everyone, please enjoy happy hour. Thanks.